Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I call the city council meeting for Wednesday, January 12th to order. So the first thing we're gonna do, a couple of our wonderful alder folks, we need to get officially sworn in. So I'm gonna do that now. So, family, for Alderwoman Dickman, or Alderman Grip, as I call their name, please just come up. However way you do it, we'll wait for you to get up here, okay? So first, Alderwoman Dickman. All right, I state your name.
I, Maria Dickman.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of Alderwoman.
Discharge all the duties of Alderwoman.
Of the city of Davenport.
Of the city of Davenport.
County of Scott.
County of Scott.
State of Iowa.
State of Iowa.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law.
Congratulations. Woo! Good, okay, cool, thank you. All right, Alderman Grip, Alderman Grip, they're already on the way. Guys, come on up. Feel free to gather in close. I state your name.
I, Kyle Grip.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of Aldermen.
Discharge all the duties of Aldermen.
Of the city of Davenport.
Of the city of Davenport.
County of Scott.
County of Scott.
State of Iowa.
State of Iowa.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law.
All right. Congratulations. For the picture. Absolutely, stay here.
Stay, don't move.
All right, one, two, three. All right, one more.
That's a good picture.
One, two, three.
Put your masks on.
Okay, so lots of things to think about. Whatever you're thinking about or interested in, we'll have a moment of silence for. Thank you. Alderman Kelly, if you'd please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. All right, Mr. Crupp, our city clerk, please call the roll. Dunn.
Here.
Kelly.
Here.
McGinnis.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Grip. Condon.
Here.
Cornet. Dickman.
Here.
Jobchin.
Here.
And Ortiz.
Here.
Ten, President, Your Honor. Thank you, Mr. Crupp. So again, good evening, everyone. As we begin the meeting of the city council, I'd again like to welcome everybody in attendance, and anybody who's viewing over any particular electronic device. We respectfully welcome your comments and opinions, but please keep in mind, as you share and talk with the council, you're also talking and sharing your thoughts with everybody around the area. We're happy you're participating in the city government, and ask that your participation please reflect the common desire we all share to make Davenport a greater place for everyone. At this time, especially for the folks in here, if you have a cellphone, if you just put it on silent or turn it off, I know pictures are coming, but when you can, so it doesn't interfere with anybody talking. If you wish to address the council on any specific item, we do have a couple on the discussion agenda or public business at the end, please come to the podium. The microphone's above you. You have five minutes. Please talk to the council as one body, not to any individual. We ask that you limit remarks again to five minutes. Please be respectful of us, we'll be respectful of you. Thank you. All right, first item, will an Alderman please move approval of the city special council meeting minutes for December 7th, 2021? Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. Then will an Alderman please move approval of the city council meeting minutes for December 8th, 2021? Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. City Administrator Spiegel, any update for us this evening?
Two quick items, a reminder that we will continue our budget conversations for fiscal year 2023 this Saturday morning at 8:30 here in the chambers, and we will be talking about the operating budget. And then, as a reminder, the city will be closed on Monday in observation of the halt day.
Thank you, City Administrator. Next item, will an Alderman please move approval of the report of the Committee of the Whole for January 5th, 2022? Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, very good. Next item, we have three appointments and two proclamations this evening. I'll read all appointments and ask for a motion to approve. First is appointment to the Civil Rights Commission, Angela Reyes is a new appointment. Park and Rec Advisory Board, Linda Greenley is a new appointment. Citizens Advisory Committee to the Grievance Subcommittee, Austin Burr. Is there a motion to approve? Motion? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you for your service, these three young, wonderful people, to the city of Davenport. Next area is, we have two proclamations, slavery and human trafficking prevention and awareness month, and Juneteenth observed holiday declaration by the city of Davenport. The first one, Alderwoman Dickman, please read.
I would be honored to. Whereas, the United States was founded upon the principle that all people are created with the unalienable right to freedom, and added the Thirteenth Amendment to the Constitution, making slavery illegal. And whereas, human trafficking is modern-day slavery, claiming millions of victims worldwide, and found in the United States most often in the form of sexual exploitation, forced labor, involuntary servitude, and debt bondage. And whereas, this horrific crime, which denies human dignity and freedoms, and fuels organized crime, exists in every city. And whereas, even though awareness of this crime is growing, human trafficking continues to go under-reported due to its isolating nature, the misunderstanding of its definition, and the lack of awareness about its indicators. And whereas, increased community education on how to identify victims of human trafficking, along with increased knowledge of local resources and services for those affected by these criminal actions, can help restore freedom and dignity to identified survivors, as well as help diminish the number of future victims. And whereas, fighting human trafficking is a shared responsibility, and the efforts by our local community to promote the yearly observance of Human Trafficking Awareness Month in January enacts one of the examples of the continuous commitment in the United States and the state of Iowa to increase awareness of, and to actively eradicate, human trafficking. And whereas, the city of Davenport joins Breaking Traffic, a program of Family Resources, in their dedication to providing community outreach and education, legislative advocacy, and comprehensive services to the survivors of human trafficking. Now, therefore, we, Mike Mattson, Mayor of, in the city council of Davenport, Iowa, do hereby proclaim January 2022 as Slavery and Human Trafficking Prevention and Awareness Month, and urge all citizens to join in this observance dated this 12th day of January 2022. I move the proclamation. There's a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And I would like to invite up Maggie Tinsman, who has been a champion of this from, I think her date's back in the state senate, and has really, you know, I think everyone in the community owes Maggie a thank you for all of her work. Her titles include, I have to have a note for all this, the Chair of Breaking Traffic Advisory Council, and Secretary of the Network Against Human Trafficking and Slavery. And Maggie, I would love to give you an opportunity to talk about all the important work you've done on this very important topic.
Thank you, thank you very much. Well, I mainly wanna tell you how much I appreciate Davenport passing this proclamation that really declares January as Slavery and Human Trafficking Prevention Month. And as the initiator of Iowa law, making human trafficking a felony, and as you know, as was just mentioned, I'm the current Secretary of the Network Against Human Trafficking, and the founder of Breaking Traffic, which is now connected with Family Resources. So I thank you once again for recognizing how important this issue is. As I mentioned before, I realize that trafficking or slavery is occurring right here in the Quad Cities, and indeed, hard to believe that, right here in River City, we have it. So we need all our citizens to learn about trafficking, so that we can become part of the solution to this heinous crime. And I don't even like the word trafficking, I want you to hear the word slavery, that's what it is. I'd also like to thank you for initiating a local massage parlor ordinance, I believe, last year, and I hope that your law enforcement personnel, who I just saw, the chief, just a minute ago, will continue to enforce it, as well as to look for human trafficking wherever drug raids are initiated, as drug and human trafficking are closely connected. Another issue is the hotel motel training. Iowa passed legislation last year for the hotel motel training, thanks to Representative, really, Gary Moore and Senator Ravi Smith, and it began January 1st of this year. To remind you what the law says, it asks hotels and motels to train all of their employees on human trafficking using programs either through the hotel chain or the Iowa Network Against Human Trafficking. And if they do, the Department of Public Safety will furnish them with a state certificate recognizing that training that would prominently be displayed in their hotel and motel. This then would allow the federal government, state government, and local government to utilize these establishments for their activities. Otherwise, no government, including city, will utilize that business, which has not trained their employees in human trafficking. Eighty-five percent of sex trafficking is done in hotels and motels. Again, I, we would appreciate it if your board would talk to our legislators about the importance of this bill. The bill's already passed, but we want it to be funded in 2022. I'm also handing out to you the Network Against Human Trafficking, three priorities. All these priorities are important, but I particularly ask you to talk to our legislators about increasing state funds for victim services by $10 million. We have the money. And include language for human trafficking. It's not in the code where it says victim services, because there was no law against it when that part of the code was, was passed. Also, adopting a safe harbor law, which would protect minors from being accused of prostitution when they're forced into human trafficking, is also very important. So finally, I just say it's most important that our Quad Cities be free of an element that destroys basic human rights. And like you, we want our communities to be a family-friendly place of which we are extremely proud. So I thank you for the proclamation.
And if you would hang out for just a second, so I can come officially present this to you. That'd be great.
I even happen to know this council person.
Oh, that's a lot to thank you for. All right, let's face the jury here.
All right. All right, then let's give her a round of applause.
Thank you, Alderwoman Dickman. The next one, Alderman Ortiz, on Juneteenth being recognized as a city holiday. Alderman Ortiz.
Thank you, Your Honor. Whereas, Juneteenth, the blending of words June and 19th is the oldest nationally-celebrated commemoration of the ending of slavery in the United States. And whereas, it was on June 19th, 1865, when Union soldiers at Galveston, Texas, announced that more than 250,000 enslaved black people in the westernmost part of Texas were freed by executive decree, nearly two and a half years after the signing of the Emancipation Proclamation. And whereas, Americans of all colors, creeds, cultures, religions, and countries of origin share a common love and respect for freedom and the determination to protect their right to freedom. And whereas, Juneteenth, along with July 4th, Independence Day, completes the cycle of freedom for America's independence. And whereas, on June 18th, 2021, President Joe Biden signed legislation making Juneteenth a federal holiday. And whereas, the mayor and Davenport City Council are proud to join our nation in honoring Juneteenth as an observed holiday. And whereas, beginning with the recognition of Juneteenth and moving forward, if a holiday is recognized by both the United States federal government and the Iowa state government, and one recognizes it as a paid holiday, then it shall be incorporated as a paid holiday within the city's administrative policies. With respect to bargaining units, the various bargaining units will be contacted about incorporating the holiday into collective bargaining agreements through side letters where applicable. How, therefore, we, Mike Mattson, Mayor, and the city council of Davenport, Iowa, do hereby proclaim June 19th as an annually-observed holiday in the city of Davenport dated this 12th day of January 2022. I move the proclamation. Is there a? We have a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? It's passed. Mayor, back to you. I don't have anything to present.
All right, thank you. Let's give that applause. Okay, so next, wonderful part of what I get to do, and what the council gets to be part of, is bringing new police officers to the city of Davenport. So, Chief, I'll meet you down.
Thank you, Mayor Mattson, and Council, Paul Sikorsky, serving as your police chief. And it's my honor this evening to introduce to you, for the sacred oath of office, four of our newest police officers, to you, our elected officials, our city leadership team, and I think, most importantly, our community and their families, who are here to witness this. So, I would like to introduce to you first Officer Benjamin Betsworth. Officer Betsworth grew up in Davenport. He graduated from Davenport Central High School, Go Blue Devils, in 2013. Following high school, then attended Blackhawk College, and then transferred to Western Illinois University. He earned his bachelor's degree in law enforcement and justice administration from Western Illinois in 2018. He worked for Genesis Health Systems for two years prior to becoming a police officer. His girlfriend, Chelsia, will be pinning his badge.
I state your name.
I, Benjamin Betsworth.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of a police officer.
Discharge all the duties of a police officer.
Of the city of Davenport.
Of the city of Davenport.
County of Scott.
County of Scott.
State of Iowa.
State of Iowa.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law.
Your police officer.
You can stay up for some pictures. You can take your mask off, if you want to, you don't have to. Congratulations. Officer Joshua Bender. Officer Bender grew up in Grand Mount, Iowa. In 2015, he graduated from Elgin High School in Elgin, Texas. Josh joined the National Guard as a combat engineer in 2015, and currently serves as a sergeant. In 2016, Josh earned his EMT Basic Certificate from Scott Community College. He served as a reserve officer with the DeWitt Police Department from 2019 to 2021. Josh deployed overseas to Qatar with the Iowa National Guard from May 2020 to April 2021. In his free time, he enjoys being outdoors with his family. Josh received the Director's Award and the 300-point club award from the Iowa Law Enforcement Academy. His fiancee Hannah will be pinning his badge.
I state your name.
I, Joshua Bender.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
To the best of my ability.
My best of my abilities.
Discharge all the duties of a police officer.
Discharge all the duties of a police officer.
Of the city of Davenport.
Of the city of Iowa. Davenport.
County of Scott.
County of Scott.
State of Iowa.
State of Iowa.
As now or hereafter required by law.
Now and hereafter required by law.
Your police officer.
Officer Eric Long. Officer Long was born and raised in Davenport. He graduated from North Scott High School. He attended Iowa Central Community College, and previously worked as a sheet metal fabricator. When Eric is not working, he enjoys camping and spending time with his family. And Eric's mother, Kathy Long, will be pinning his badge.
I state your name.
I, Eric Long.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of a police officer.
Discharge all the duties of a police officer.
Of the city of Davenport.
Of the city of Davenport.
County of Scott.
County of Scott.
State of Iowa.
State of Iowa.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law.
Your police officer.
Officer Mason Logg. Mason grew up in Hampton, Illinois, and graduated from United Township High School. He earned his associate's degree from Blackhawk College. He continued his education at Western Illinois University, where he is currently working towards his bachelor's degree in law enforcement and justice administration, with a minor in homeland security. Mason worked at Unity Point Health prior to becoming a police officer, and his mother, Amy, will be pinning his badge.
I state your name.
I, Mason Logg.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And I, and that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of a police officer.
Discharge all the duties of a police officer.
Of the city of Davenport.
Of the city of Davenport.
County of Scott.
County of Scott.
State of Iowa.
State of Iowa.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now and hereafter required by law.
Police officer.
In closing, to council, thank you for your continued support. These officers will be starting the FTO program tomorrow, or very soon here, in the next few days, and they'll be serving Davenport, out on our, in our community, on our streets, in our police cars, so the community will see them relatively soon. So we appreciate your continued support.
Thank you, Chief, thank you, officers, we wish you the best. All right, so we have another thing, this is a really cool night. So, the next thing is a distinguished budget presentation award. So I'll read a little bit, and then I'll ask Ms. Mallory to meet me at the podium. The city of Davenport's Finance Department received the Government Finance Officers Association Distinguished Budget Presentation Award. The GFOA award represents a standard of excellence and transparency in budgeting, and the city has received the award consecutively for now 27 years. The city met the nationally-recognized guidelines for effective budget presentation that included representing the budget document as a policy document, a financial plan, an operations guide, performance evaluation tool, and a strategic plan. I would like to recognize the city of Davenport Finance Department Chief Financial Officer and Assistant City Administrator Mallory Merritt, and Budget Analyst Jali Omar, for their unwavering dedication to ensuring that the city of Davenport practices with the highest principles of government budgeting, and continuously preparing budget documents of the very highest quality. I would also like to recognize and thank the Davenport City Council members for setting the foundation of this budget process with strong budget policies, and the citizens of Davenport for their contribution to the success of our city by completing the annual citizen survey. On behalf of myself and the citizens, congratulations to Team Davenport, and Ms. Merritt, and Mr. Omar, if you would meet me at the podium. Okay, so on behalf of the city of Davenport again, I'll read this, so everybody can see it and hear it. Government Finance Officers Association Distinguished Budget Presentation Award, presented to the city of Davenport, Iowa. Jeffrey Bean, Executive Director. Totally up to you.
Don't just leave it.
I've got glasses, so it's hard.
It's okay.
I struggle, I do.
There we go. All right, ready? One, two, three. One more, one, two, three.
Good job, good job, good job. Say something.
Hello, Jali Omar, Budget Analyst, Finance. First, I'd like to thank staff and
First, I'd like to thank staff and council for the many months of budget preparation, revenue forecasting, budget review meetings that culminated with this distinguished budget presentation award. Secondly, I'd like to thank again council specifically for setting sound financial and budgeting policies that help drive the budget process. And then looking forward, we look ahead and we would like to introduce and present the FY23 operating budget this Saturday and at our second budget workshop. So with that, let's move on to 2023.
Thank you. So a lot of good things happening and so wonderful recognitions. So the next area is petitions and communications with council mayor. I have one that I'm going to read a resolution that the council did about two years ago, and I just want to read it, remind, reaffirm everyone, both in lieu of things that have been going on recently or in the past, that this council is steadfast in its will to make sure that this is a welcoming place. So this resolution by the city council in the city of Davenport again was passed, but I'm reading it to reaffirm it again. Condemning hate and divisiveness in all forms, whereas those bent on dividing and sowing the seeds of strife and discord are increasing their efforts, whereas some incidents of hateful acts are being ignored, tolerated, and in some cases, condoned in the world today. Whereas the dark path of division and hatred begins with identifying, marginalizing the other, and if unchecked, frighteningly quickly leads to oppression and even genocide. Whereas a great strength and part of the genius of this country has been to evolve with and incorporate into the national fabric its increasing diversity from many, one. Whereas the city of Davenport and this Quad City area ever strive to be a safe and welcoming community for all, whereas some in our community feel marginalized under threat and fearful, and whereas the moment calls for our local leaders to stand up and say, no more. Now therefore, it is hereby resolved by Mayor Mike Mattson and the city council of Davenport that the city of Davenport condemns all forms of hatred and divisiveness, that the city of Davenport supports and stands with those who are fearful, and the city of Davenport encourages those charged with enforcement of the law to ensure that the city is a safe and welcoming community. Thank you. And now I see other folks. Alderwoman Lee.
Thank you very much, mayor. I have two things. One, I was just down on the riverfront and they've got the ice chunks, the blocks set up for the ice extravaganza. The chainsaws are starting to come out, and I hope it gets really cold so that they last. So that's very exciting. Also had a good pizza. And a point to the mayor. I'd like to request an update on the crime task force, on the status, progress, and direction. You had said that there's a meeting on the 20th, so if we could possibly do that at the committee of the whole on February 2nd, that would be great. It's been about a year, and we are voting on something related to the Davenport Police Department and the city's legislative program and funding. So it's a good time to take a look and see where we are with the crime task force. So that's a request for the meeting on February 2nd, and that's after the next meeting, like you said. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman Lee. Alderwoman McGinnis.
Thank you, your honor. I just had a couple of things tonight. Once, one, I was really amiss last week. I had an opportunity to talk about Amy Grosskopf, and I don't believe she's here tonight, but she is our retiring library director. Amy worked with the Davenport Library for 33 years through, in a multitude of different positions, and finally, as its director. She had a wonderful job of leading the library, and we've had some great library directors, for sure. But I didn't, she was here last week. I talked about the library and their visionary thinking in terms of ARPA dollars, and we were voting on that. And this was the, this was the community center, which is very typical of Amy's leadership, and I think the leadership that she has brought to the library. Thinking of the library is not just a place where you get books or tapes or whatever, but really a community asset. And really, through the years, I am liaison to the Board of Trustees and to the vision of what we can do for the community and how we can reach out to community, to people within our community that might not have access to the library. So it was all of the things, it's really a tribute to Amy and to her staff, and I'm really sorry, last week when she was here, I couldn't recognize her and say, thank you so much for what you've done for the city. Secondly, I know everybody got their heating bill and went, yikes, this month, I did. And I wanted to remind everybody, it's something I talk about often around this time of year, but Community Action of Eastern Iowa, which offers different kinds of assistance. It is income-based, but it is, it's assistance on utility bills, on furnace repair, weatherization, all kinds of different programs. It's a wonderful organization, and again, it is income-based. They are not doing in-person appointments right now because of COVID, according to their website, but you can call 563-324-3236. If you know anybody who you think might need this assistance, let them know about this. Their website is CAE Iowa dot org. They've been doing this for many years in the community, and they usually will take, do assistance requests through April 30th. I don't know where they are with their funding, but please, if you know anybody who needs this help, Community Action of Eastern Iowa, you can get that information if you Google their name. Finally, I wanted to say that the third ward meeting will be virtual. It would have been next Monday, but because that's a holiday, that's Martin Luther King's birthday, we're going to be doing it on Tuesday night at 6:30. It'll be virtual. You can get the information. It'll be go-to meeting, and the information is on the city's website. You can either come in on your tablet or computer, or you can call in. And so I will have Alderman, Administrator Spiegel will be our guest, and we'll be talking about the ARPA funding and where some of those projects are. We're already rolling with some of that. Canadian Pacific's been a big discussion recently in what the city's trying to do to get their OREN into a situation that we don't have a lot of power in. We'll be talking about the budget process. We'll also be talking about the legislative agenda that the city does every year and what we're going to be looking at this year as our Iowa legislature is in session. So I hope you can join me. That's Tuesday night, January 18th at 6:30, and it'll be, again, be virtual. Thank you, your honor.
Thank you, Alderwoman McGinnis. Alderman Grip.
All right, thank you, your honor. I've got three things tonight. With it being my first in-person meeting, I wanted to start off by welcoming Alderman Kelly and Alderman Ortiz to the Davenport City Council. I look forward to working with you and look forward to a successful two-year term. Secondly, I think the chief walked out, but I wanted to point out to Chief Sikorsky that Officer Betsworth is the third Davenport Central alumni that I coached, who is now a Davenport police officer, and I'm very proud about that, and I love when you see a kid who sticks around town, but then also decides to pursue a life of public service. So congratulations to him. And then the third thing, since I have my entire family here today, I wanted to just thank them for being here and for their support over the last six years. Being an alderman is a very time-consuming endeavor, nights and weekends and a lot of hours every week. You couldn't do it without a rock-solid wife like I have and four pretty good kids, although Jake would not wear dress clothes tonight, so. But thank you. Thank you for all your support and for being here. Thanks, mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Grip. Alderman Ortiz.
Thank you, your honor. I will be having a fourth ward meeting this January 25th from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the Kepi Building, which is located inside the Mississippi Valley Fairgrounds. Our guest will be the Public Works Director, Nicole Gleason. We'll be going over the See, Click, Fix app, the snow removal concerns, and then also we'll give you guys an update regarding the Central Park and Hickory Grove construction project that'll be happening here in the near future. So if you can, wear a mask, drive safe, and we'll see you guys January 25th from 6:00 to 7:00 at the Kepi Building located inside the Mississippi Valley Fairgrounds. Thank you, your honor.
Thank you, Alderman Ortiz. Alderman Cornet.
I'd just like to thank the Public Works people for doing such a good job with our ICE problem and got a little help from the nature, Mother Nature today, which was good, but you all did a really good job in keeping up on it, and we really appreciate it.
Thank you, Alderman Cornet. Anyone else? Very good. We'll move to items on discussion. All right, the first one that we're going to talk about tonight is a resolution approving case, P. Papa 21-05, being the request of Beckett Place Development LLC on behalf of Glenn and Kathleen Moller for a preliminary plat of Beckett Place, a 51-lot subdivision on 25.8 acres located south of Veterans Memorial Parkway and east of Interstate 74. Is there any public with comment? Seeing none, will an alderman please move the resolution? I, yep. And a second. Okay, now, any discussion from alderman? Alderman Jobchin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This will be pretty anticlimactic. I voiced some concerns last week. Been tracking this one for a little bit as it initially went through planning and zoning and was recommended for denial, and then kind of came back through. I just had some concerns, you know, making sure that we, as a city, don't have it in our policy to just grant waivers, you know, as a rubber stamp to developers for the promise of some increased income tax revenue. Fortunately, I was able to have some great conversations over this past week with one of my colleagues, some city staff, the developer and developer's engineer. They gladly answered my questions, eased a lot of my concerns. I feel that this variance that comes along with this preliminary plat is warranted. It is the right thing to do. I will be voting yes for it this evening, and I thank Brian Shat and Laura Berkeley from our city staff for graciously always entertaining my calls and emails. Thank you. Back to you.
Thank you, Alderman Jobchin. Okay, anyone else? Very good. City clerk, please call the roll. Ortiz.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Grip.
Yes.
Cornet.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Condon.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Ann Jobchin.
Yes.
Ten yeses, your honor. The resolution is adopted. The next item is a resolution authorizing the submission of an application to the Economic Development Administration for grant assistance with the design and construction of the River Center Convention Center Recovery and Adler Theater Ventilation Upgrade Project. Before I ask for public, I understand there's a substitute, and if Clay, if you could just quickly update us and tell us what that substitute is, please. Mr. Merritt, I apologize.
Thank you, your honor. So Clay Merritt, Public Works, last week, staff requested this item be placed on discussion so that we can update some of the numbers that we're submitting as part of this grant. You'll notice in the background information, it had some nice solid, you know, even $1.6 million, for instance, was the city's contribute, contribution. So we've updated those numbers earlier today. So just an example, one of the three, the verbiage stayed the same, but one of the three numbers was the city contribution. So instead of $1.6 million flat, it's $1,621,469, just so we match to the dollar figure what's going to be in the grant application. That's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, is there any public with comment? Will an alderman move the resolution? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Alderwoman Lee.
Thank you very much, mayor. I'm always, with COVID being an aerosol, I'm always happy to see that updating the ventilation projects are really good. I'm really glad to see that for the River Center as well as the Adler, and I'm going to bring up a request again that we consider it here for City Hall as well in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman Lee. Anyone else? Very good. City clerk, please call the roll. Dickman.
Yes.
Grip.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Cornet.
Yes.
Jobchin.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Ortiz.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Ann Condon.
Yes.
Ten yeses, your honor. Very good. The resolution is adopted. The next item is there a motion for approval of all items on the consent agenda? Motion and a second. Brian, city clerk, please call the roll for all items on consent. Grip.
Yes.
Condon.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Cornet.
Yes.
Ortiz.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Jobchin.
Yes.
Ann Dickman.
Yes.
Ten yeses, your honor. Very good. Consents approved. The next area is are there any other ordinances, resolutions, or motions? There are none for this evening. Next item, is there any public with business? So if you have something for the council other than what was on the agenda, please come to the podium. You have five minutes. Please state your name, address, or ward. If you're not from here, we'd love to know where you are, and remember, please talk to us as a body, not as an individual. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Dale Gilmour, and I live in the 6th Ward. Before I begin, I just want to also welcome the three new aldermen. I've had a chance to speak with two of them, and I look forward to talking with Alderman Kelly. I had originally planned to speak last week, but after a second thought, the subject of my topic is probably better suited to this week. Last Sunday, January 9th, was National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day. When nothing was mentioned last week, I thought, surely, this would be a proclamation of some sort today, but to my surprise, nothing was mentioned. So I would like to take this opportunity, recognize and thank the members of the Davenport Police Department who are here tonight. Tonight, four new police officers were sworn in. Family and friends were invited to celebrate the event, and rightfully so. A career in public safety, whether as a police officer or firefighter, is a commitment very few choose to make. It requires a certain kind of individual dedication. So the next time you see a police officer or firefighter, take a moment to thank them for their service. The above statement, and I will read it again, is the real point of my message here tonight. So the next time you see a police officer or firefighter, take a moment and thank them for their service. We make such a big deal, and again, we should, when a new police officer or firefighter is hired, but what do we do after they have dedicated 15, 20, or 25 years of service to the community? They're retired in a simple, semi-private ceremony in the community room across the street. Really? I personally would like to see some type of recognition for these people at a city council meeting. We wouldn't have to have it on a weekly basis. Maybe we could have it on a bimonthly or quarterly basis, with their respective chiefs acknowledging their accomplishments, and maybe even some humorous but not embarrassing about each of the retirees. We would again invite the family and friends, maybe even have some donuts. Sorry, Chief Sikorsky. I believe it's past time we should formally acknowledge our public service retirees. With budget talks starting last Saturday, couldn't we find a few dollars in the budget to honor our public service retirees? I'm not talking about a gold watch and a chain, but a public acknowledgement is the very least we could do. I'll even pay for the donuts. Sorry, sorry again, chief. Boy, am I in trouble now. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hearing and seeing no one, is there any other items to city minister? No, I'll accept a motion to adjourn. Second, motion and second to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. Everyone be safe this evening and this weekend. Thank you.